Good evening, welcome to the Foxborough Selectmen's Meeting, Tuesday, October 28th. I'll go through the agenda. 7:00 PM, we have Citizens Input, topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chair, 48 hours in advance of meeting. 7:05, we have a Selectmen's Update. 7:15, the MIA Super Bowl request for a fee waiver has been withdrawn. 7:25, we'll have a discussion on the Special Town Meeting Warrant article for Town Hall by Bill and David. At 7:35, the Town Hall Working Group, David will give us an update. And 7:45, Bill will provide us with the Town Manager's update. John, can you lead us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Bob is going to give us an update on Veterans Day activities.
Thank you, Lorraine. I'll make this pretty brief. Thursday, the 11th of November is Foxborough Veterans Day. I wanted to come to the Board and give an in-person, you know, invitation to everybody to attend, including the Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager.
Well, thank you.
I know that everybody doesn't have the day off. We're encountering that, but we decided to do it on the traditional day, just to keep the tradition of that day alive. Mike Johns, the Veteran Services Director, will be the keynote speaker. And what would Veterans Day in Foxborough be without our Severnading Seniors?
Right.
They'll be performing their patriotic medley and their, you know, tribute to the armed services songs that they sing. So we're looking forward to hopefully having a good turnout and people coming out to help support the veterans of Foxborough.
Thank you. What time do the activities start?
11 o'clock on Thursday at the, here at the high school auditorium. After the event, in the cafeteria, there'll be refreshments served courtesy of the new little home here in Foxborough.
Great.
Thanks, Bob.
John, thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
That is going to be here?
Yes.
Okay.
John Gray will be speaking on behalf of the Board.
I only have a half an hour.
Actually, I meant, I'm sorry, I meant to ask, Will, if you'd like to sit up and have some remarks.
I'll be very brief if I do. Okay, well, thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. Okay, the next topic is Selectmen's Update. Jim, can you give us an update about the veterans and Thanksgiving Day?
Sure. Actually, it's a good segue, Bob, if you want to stick around for a second. I guess we can call it the Second Annual, since we started last year and we are doing it again this year. So, very simple, on Thanksgiving Day, when Mansfield plays Foxborough and vice versa, we invite all of the veterans that want to sign up or come to us to receive a free turkey. And you get that, I think, probably the weekend before Thanksgiving. And try to encourage the veterans and their families to attend the Thanksgiving game. This year, it's going to be over in Mansfield. And what we did last year was we set up, if you want to call it a VIP tent, we had the veterans and the families allowed to go right to the end zone and watch the game from there. And it allows the kids to kind of see and talk to the veterans, not only at the game, but when they deliver the turkeys. We had some nice cards. I think Angie Davis's kids made a bunch of handmade cards and passed them out with the turkeys the week before. So it's just a nice thing to do for the kids and get the two generations together. And it was very well received. The Foxborough Touchdown Club embraced it, and the Mansfield Gridiron Club, really, my cousin Richie over there initiated it, so they took the lead. So they were guests in Foxborough this year, we're going to be guests over in Mansfield. So it's a nice opportunity. If you want to help pass out the turkeys or make the cards, feel free to email me or give me a call. I'm going to put something in the paper Thursday, so you'll have that contact information. And then we are looking for some donations. We had one very generous donor last year. And if you want to make a donation, if you can make a check out to the Foxborough Touchdown Club, it's at PO Box 465. Any donation is appreciated. And basically, 100% of it goes right to the Touchdown Club to buy the turkeys. Last year, Stop &amp; Shop gave a discount to the turkeys, and we didn't turn anyone away. We asked people if you could sign up beforehand by emailing, but if you show up the day of the game or give a call, we fit you in. So it's a pretty simple process. So, thanks for letting me say that.
All right. Okay, so we have a couple of minutes before the Special Town Meeting Warrant article. Do you want to do some action items?
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the acceptance of a $25 donation to the Boyd Library from the Swedish Ancestry Research Association, and thank them for their donation.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. The next one is from, the Foxborough Cultural Council is a state mandated town board that provides access to grants promoting the arts, humanities, and interpretive services to schools and nonprofit organizations. It is asking that four people be reappointed to the Board. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the reappointment of David Cavaney, Vena Carroll, Julie Pritchard, and Maria Rosario Cavaney for terms expiring October 28, 2017, and thank them for their service.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. And the last item is the minutes for October 14, 2014. I move that the Board of Selectmen accept the meeting minutes of October 14, 2014 as written or as amended.
Second.
Can I just, a couple of changes. On page two, Debbie, third paragraph up from the bottom, no substantive changes?
Yes. Take it out?
If you could strike subsequent and just put substantive.
Substantive.
And then on page four, one, two, three, seven up from the bottom, Mr. Keegan stated that they can have the, just insert sign by law review committee?
Thank you.
One added on page seven, on the fifth paragraph down, really just for clarification, this was a discussion about the Town Hall roof. And what I was saying was, Mr. DeValle stated that the same topic came up about three years ago at the CIP meeting, and it was our, former Town Manager, Kevin Pecos. That should be a period after that. And then, I'm sorry, Kevin Pecos, who proposed fixing the roof, then a period. Where we say, we said, why would we do this? It was really, it was me speaking as a PIC member, so it should, the next paragraph should say, "The PIC asked..."
CIP.
CIP, sorry, capital improvement. Said, "Why would we do this if we're going to get a new Town Hall next year?" So I just didn't want to put that on the shoulders of the Selectmen. Or do one, it looked like I was saying Kevin Pecos was doing something that he shouldn't have done.
So you're saying Kevin Pecos actually was in favor of putting a new roof on?
He initiated the new roof.
Yeah.
And the CIP voted it down, saying, "Why would we do that if we're getting a new Town Hall next year?"
So it wasn't a priority for CIP?
Correct.
Okay.
All set with changes? All those in favor? Thank you. That's it. Bill, do you want to explain about the MIA withdrawal of their request?
Yes, we received a notification today that they have opted to withdraw their request at this time. They did not communicate their reasoning, though I did speak with them last week and indicate, I indicated to them that I had read all the background information and the termination from the Department of Finance, Department of Revenue, which had indicated in their city and state opinions that this would not qualify as something we could waive, because they don't qualify as a public, as a public charity, which is publicly controlled charity, which is the key words. And as a result, they are not eligible for us to waive that type of thing. Now, the language of the lease, the lease with the stadium, does allow the Board to waive that for charitable organizations, but they would not qualify in this instance, because there are private entities that serve on their Board. And they've actually admitted that to me. They said, "We are not a private charity." So...
They're not a public charity.
Public charity, rather. They're not a public charity.
Could we get a copy of that?
Sure.
Because I, when I went back to the records, and I agree, there is a provision in the lease that says...
Yes, absolutely.
It's up to the Board to say yes or no. But at that time, we had reached out to the Duressis' firm and asked his opinion, and he sent us an email through Randy back in 2011.
Okay.
That said, their law firm reached out to the DOA, and the DOA...
DOR.
DOR, I'm sorry.
DOR, yeah.
DOR, Department of Revenue. And the DOR responded back that there's no precedence on it, and they were silent on it, because they basically said, "We could do it, or we couldn't do it, and there's no decision." So if that came back from the DOR, I think that's important to understand, because if that's the case, if and when this comes up again with a different nonprofit charity group that may ask, I don't want to be trying to figure it out, figuring it out later.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
So was this a letter that the DOR sent us?
Yeah, it's a city, it's called City and State, which they offer opinions on various actions that cities and towns can take. And they listed all the various categories of which, and it talked about that whole issue concerning the non-aid amendment in the Constitution that allows us, you have to be very careful about how you spend, you know, community dollars.
So that wasn't specific to this case? It was a general?
No, it was, yeah, it was a general application.
So before we take that as gospel, the fact that we have a payment in lieu of taxes agreement where it gives us the ability to set the price and set the parameters, for instance, a ticket price, you know, can we lower the ticket price? Is that giving away money? Can we raise it? I think this particular case is specific that I kind of hung my hat on what the attorney was saying.
Okay. I wasn't aware that there was an actual, a letter that was actually issued to the Board. Was it an email or was it an opinion?
I have it here. It was a letter from Randy Scholins. It was back in November of 2011, and basically Randy says, "Here it is," and he sent it to Sandra. But it was from Rod Hoffman, who was at Duressis, and basically a page of all his work. And at the end of this, he basically signs off that says, "It's not illegal, it's not legal, it's up to the Board." So you may be right, but I don't want to make our next decision based on a website that is not specific to a lease and our...
If you read that, the language, and I'll send it to you, because I think it's important for you to see it. If you read that, it seems pretty clear, and I understand why it's worded the way it is, because in this particular case, it's interesting, because we actually pay fees to this organization as a town.
Sure, yep.
So there's, there's the issue that, so effectively, if we in fact waived the fee in this case, we'd effectively be paying twice to that organization.
The way I look at it, Bill, is if we waived it, we would, as a town, be making a donation to the MIAA, which we can't do, given the language in the Constitution. I mean, I studied this last year as well, and it, you know, I'm not an attorney, but it was pretty clear to me, if they were a public charity, we would have that option. But given that they've defined themselves not as a public charity, they're completely out of our ability to deal with it.
Right, and I actually, I specifically asked that question of the folks from the MIAA, and they, in fact, Bill Gay, who was the person I spoke to, he admitted, he said, "We're not a public charity." He said, "So," therein lies the fact, I said, "Well, how do I, how can the Board get to a point where they're giving away a charitable donation to a group?" Because it says in your lease, you can do that, but it has to be a charity. And they're not a charitable organization.
That's where the definitions don't line up, yeah.
There lies the issue. So that's where, and I have to have the conversation, you know, I guess they've contemplated that, they didn't think that was the right way to go. So I'm happy to share the information I have with you, you know, and so you can reach that same conclusion.
So if that's the answer, and I'm not here to argue for or against MIA or what their entity is, but if we've got a lease agreement that says one thing, and we've got an attorney that we paid for that says another thing, and then you're saying something, I think we need some closure on it.
Sure.
So if this comes up next year or two years, or maybe there's a group of who knows what it is, and it may touch our hearts that we say, "Yeah, that makes sense. Can we do it or can't we do it?"
Well, I think if it's not a, if it's a publicly owned charity, all right, or it's a charitable organization, like a 501(c)(3) type of thing, I think that's a different issue. Whereas, the difference is that they're not a charitable organization. So I think that's, but the language specifically in the lease says charitable. So I think that's, because I went back and I read the lease for that reason, to see what's the key, what's the key words there. So those are the trigger words that I looked at.
Yeah, but my point is, the attorney did the exact same thing, and he put in writing, which differs from what you're saying. I'm not agreeing or disagreeing.
Fair enough.
But I think the Board ought to understand the issue, so when it comes up again.
Well, let's add that letter to the body of knowledge that we have.
Yeah.
This is...
So you don't have this letter, do you?
I don't think I do, no. I'll take a look at that, too.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have about five more minutes for our next item. Do you want to talk about the Selectmen's, the MMA meeting?
Oh, the Selectmen's Association.
Joe Mason? Can I say anything?
Sure.
Okay. On Saturday, at the Tri-County Vocational Technical School in Franklin, they had an annual Selectmen's Conference, and, which is very interesting. I attended it last year, and I attended it again this year. And what it is, is just the first order of business is just a kind of a discussion, or presentation by MMA, Jeff Beckwith, on what's been going on in the state and how it affects towns, and legislation coming up and all that stuff. It's about a half-hour presentation. And then they break out into different sessions, and our Town Manager, Mr. Keegan, was a speaker at one of the sessions in regard to town charters, and the way to go through the legislative process to change your town charter, or to get a town charter and all that stuff. It was very interesting. They also had, which Bill can speak to afterwards, but they also had a breakout section, session on how to, which was kind of funny, how to find a new town administrator or town manager. And I felt at that point that I could probably have taught the class. And then they also had one about, it was...
On the proposition questions?
Oh, the ballot, for ballot questions. And then they also had one about medical, I didn't go to that, it was the paramedics and town.
Paramedics and communities.
But anyways, it was very interesting, and it was really good, because I got to see some of the Selectmen from other towns that I had spoken to last year. And we were able to catch up on what had, what were their issues last year and how they had resolved them. And it was a good networking, networking session. So Bill can explain what he talked about.
Thank you. It was, I had the opportunity to speak with Marilyn Catraeus, who is, works for the Department of Housing and Community Development. And Marilyn has worked for the state for 35 years for the same agency. You know, it doesn't happen very often, you get somebody to work that long for the same state agency. But she's probably one of the leading experts in the state in terms of how charters have been developed throughout each community through Massachusetts. She has the history going back to the 1600s and 1700s here in Massachusetts, to how it all started. She has been an advisor to the MMA, the Massachusetts Managers Former Government Committee, which is a committee that I've served on for the past 10 years, and I've been serving as past chairman as well. And where we go around to the various cities and towns for communities who are looking to change their charters, or to create a charter, if they have, they will have one. And we advise them on all the elements of the charter, which, you know, the difference between the town administrator versus town manager, you know, the difference between, you know, in Massachusetts alone, there are probably like six or seven different titles for the chief administrative officer. And so there's no set term for that. And even the term Town Manager is actually interpreted different ways in other towns as well. So it's interesting to just, you know, talk about the different aspects of that, and how every single charter virtually has a different nuance to it, because there was some political snag along the way to cause it to be, to go in a different direction, whether it be the level of power from a certain Board not being centralized versus being decentralized, because there was a concern that that might actually upset the entire charter process. So it does vary from place to place because of the different nuances that communities have. So it was just interesting, you know, being able to share that information. And it drew a lot of questions. I was amazed. And we went for a good 45 minutes just answering questions about the different situations in each city and town. So it was just, it was good to kind of hear the different situations from each community. And at the end of it, a lot of people are asking, you know, is there, you know, our actual, our subcommittee, our committee actually provides services, you know, while people go out and visit, you know, those committees and talk to those folks. In the past few years, I've actually visited probably a half a dozen communities just to talk to them about their process. So it's just a free service we provide, you know, it's something that hopefully helps their process a little bit and helps them understand it. A lot of people, you know, have charters, a lot of people have never read them, so they don't even know what it means, you know, so, but it's, but it's the guiding document, it's your local constitution. And so if you, if you have any question about who's in charge of, who's in authority over what, that's the guiding document that you have. So it's interesting work.
Yeah, but the MMA is a really great resource for the, for local town governments. And they have their annual meeting in January, which I think we'll be attending, and it's very good, because you get to meet people from all over. And there are, every town is different, but every town has the same problems. And it's just an interesting experience.
I think it's excellent for Board members to go, if you can go, because, and it's hard, because it's a weekend, you know, a lot of people are committing on weekends. But it is something that I do recommend all Board members to go, if you can at one time or another, not, maybe not, can't go every time, but you get a chance to sort of talk your issues over with other communities, to see what it's like, and what, how they've solved issues, or how they haven't solved issues. You know, that's, it's also, it's also helpful that way. So, okay?
Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
All right, the next item is discussion on the Special Town Meeting Warrant Article for Town, for the Town Hall Project. Bill and David.
Okay, I can just give everyone sort of a, by way of the, of this item, a briefing of what's happened over the past few weeks. The, we went out to RFP for two major pieces of this particular article. One for the architect, the design services, that would be responsible for designing the new Town Hall. And the second would be for an overall project manager, otherwise known as an OPM. And both those RFPs went out almost simultaneously. We ended up with a total of six architects pulling, submitting documents and proposals for the architect's piece of that project. And we had 11 OPMs submit proposals for the, for that piece. We had a subcommittee that was comprised of myself, Jack Schlyer from the Building Committee, Bill Yuchner from the Building Committee, and Dick Hydecker from the Working Group, and Bill Cass from the Building Committee, who served in reviewing those two documents. At the end of the day, we ended up interviewing four architects and four OPMs after narrowing the field. And at the, in the final results from that process, that we chose the firm of LLB. Some of you may recall that they were the designing, design architects for the library. I don't want anybody to get nervous about the fact that because it's a different design, that it's going to be, you know, it's going to be, it's got the town halls to look like that. We're very clear about the fact that we want this to be a colonial design. So I don't want that to be a question in anybody's mind. And they were that as well, and they have done such designs in other locations. The second thing is, and it was, and it was a reason why we, at the end, a couple of reasons why. One is that we had a very good experience working with them. I obviously wasn't part of that, but the members of the committee that were on the committee all agreed that they were a very good firm to work with. They were very responsive to the needs of the town, they were very understanding of what the project was, and they really had a good grasp of it. Secondarily, they offer what is known as bin design, and Jimmy may be familiar with that, where it's three-dimensional design, where you can actually show three-dimensional models of how the building will actually work and function. And it's actually quite helpful in terms of providing information to the public on that, in terms of what we're proposing. So there were, of the three, there were, of the four firms that we looked at, three of those firms actually provided that. But LLB had the combination of that design level, as well as the fact that we had worked with them previously, and we had a good experience with them. So the second part of the project was the OPM, and we looked at, and by the way, I want to say, from the outset, we had four great firms to work with. I mean, they were tremendous. All four of them were tremendous. And then, and the same thing went for the OPMs. We had, at the end, we chose the firm Vertex, which is, also, we had experience with them at the very end of the library project, when they, when they had the bond issue with the contractor, and they finished the work, and Vertex came in to finish, helped finish that work. And Mr. Yuchner indicated to me that he thought their work was actually very well done. They had also, one of the biggest selling points to us collectively was the fact that they have just come off the Drakett project, the Drakett Town Hall project, which is almost identical to the project that we're building. They built it right behind the existing Town Hall, and did a beautiful job. I mean, really come out nice. So we were very much impressed by that, and they kept that project online, on time and on budget. And so we were very much interested in talking to them for that reason.
I think, you know, you're talking about the Drakett project, we actually use that as one of our comps.
Right.
When we're developing our budget and our costs.
Right.
And from the looks of it, it was spot on.
They did a beautiful job with that building. I mean, some of the pictures that they, that they gave us, of some of the, they just literally opened that building probably about a month ago, and they just tore down the old Town Hall. So the project is almost complete now. So then we went to the negotiation phase, and I'm pleased to report that we had estimated this project to come in around $550,000. The actual price that we're going to submit to Town Meeting is $585,000. So $7,000 higher than what we had estimated. So that's about a 1% difference overall. So we were very, very pleased that we had estimated it as closely as we had. So, and that's for both services combined.
Is that what they came in at, and you negotiated down to that number?
Yeah, we had, well, the process is that you never, they don't give you an actual price, you have to negotiate with them after, once they get selected. Do you follow me?
Yeah.
All right, so we negotiate with them, and we get the price to where it was. And so Bill, I have to credit Bill Yuchner for getting that price to where it is for both, both services.
So it's $557?
$557, $585 is the estimate. Doesn't get much closer to that, right, Jim?
Yeah, it's nice.
It's great.
So...
Thank you.
So that's the good news. So those, that's the recommendation before you for that article, is that we will be recommending that amount for funding at Town Meeting. Randy's already indicated to me that the funding, he's finalizing those pieces of that, and he'll have that ready for Town Meeting. We're meeting with the AdCom tomorrow night, and we'll be making that same presentation.
All right. All right, so we need to take a vote of support for this article with this price tag, now that we have the numbers. Can I have a motion for that, please?
I think I move that we accept, or support, Article III of the annual Town Meeting in regard to the Town Hall plans.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Just under discussion, and just so, you know, I, I'm happy, this is the first I've heard that LLB has been awarded the contract. I've worked with LLB for about 15 years. A lot of my work... A lot of my work comes from architects. They had asked me for information and I purposely said I couldn't work on this project. But I've worked with LLB on brand new projects, renovated projects. Their design is impeccable. And a lot of times that firm gets carried from the soft costs with the design all the way through construction documents. And very seldom do I see a project where they're working on going to overrides or the expenses go more than what they estimated at the beginning. They're very in tune to the lead, the green sustainable design.
Right.
And I've worked with them on projects that are very tight against other buildings. And I don't know if it was Drayton Fair that interviewed.
Yes, it was Drayton Fair. He was, he came, he came to the meeting.
He's very, very committed to the projects. The OPM I haven't worked with before, but I think we're very lucky to get this architect.
That's good to hear.
Thank you. Both those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, Town Hall Working Group. Have an update from David?
Yeah, so, this Thursday night at seven o'clock right here in the, in the media center, we'll be having our final working group meeting that's open to the public. Opportunity for people to come in and ask specific questions and get very specific answers. Now that we have what our cost is, we can, we can discuss those costs. I think, you know, the working group, in looking at, at the Drakett project and looking at the square footages and, and everything that we went through with, basically setting aside the KBA report and doing our own study has led us to this point. And I think, I don't think anybody can, can say that we didn't do our homework and developed in this strategy. So, I'm, I'm proud to be a member of that working group because I know the work that everybody put into it. There was a lot of debate and I think at the end of the day, we're at a point now where, yeah, we might be spending a little bit more money versus a renovation, but you have to understand it's not apples to apples, it's apples to oranges. The difference was, at the start, it's sixteen hundred square feet. So, I don't think we want to be at a point three years from now or four years from now that we're at a space at town hall. I think it's, it's money well spent.
Thanks David.
Thanks David. Okay. A little bit early for the town manager update.
Just a couple of things. In my spare time, I've been working on, I've been working with the Board of Health on regulations for the trash program. It's something that we, that we don't currently have, a good solid set of regulations in town. So, we're looking to try and establish a good set of regulations. To the credit of the Board of Health, they actually had, had a couple, had some information that they had obtained from other communities as to how that works. And so, I've been working with them. And I'd like to establish a subcommittee made up of a member of the Board of Health and maybe, and perhaps a member of this board, several staff members who would like to work on this because our trash contract is actually up in June of this year. And I'd like to, next year, and I'd like to be able to come up with a, with a solution because I know that there was a lot of challenges to the last process. And I'd like to try to see if we can find a way to smooth that out this time.
Bill, why do we even need to get on that road and have a trash contract when private vendors can compete amongst themselves?
Well, we don't necessarily, but the issue is, and we may not end up in that direction, John. The issue is that we don't have any kind of regulation that, that sort of, you know, holds a standard for every, every one of the vendors in town. So, in other words, you know, there are safety issues that we should be looking at.
I can see having a standard by which they have to comply.
Yes.
But the fact that we, we went through, it was insane what we went through before.
Right.
And the fact that I'd say now the primary vendor is not, is without a contract.
Right.
And it's working fine.
And we, and we may end up in that same situation. But the one thing we have to be cognizant of though is that the contractor that does have the contract currently is also picking up town trash. You know, so in other words, town, the various locations. So, at the end of the day, we're going to have to have, we may have to contract with somebody to provide that service for us. But if, if in fact, it comes to a situation where there is only one or two vendors that are actually going to collect all the town trash, I mean, I'm not, I'm not really in a position right now to say it's a good idea to get in the way of free enterprise here because it may be that's the best way to go. But by the same token, there should be a standard that everybody, everybody follows the same standard.
Yeah, I agree with the standard.
And that's what we're looking to do.
The last time we went through this, it was declared that the town is no longer in the trash business.
And I'm not looking to.
And minutes later, we signed a contract.
I'm not looking to get back into it necessarily because I think it does run pretty well the way it runs now. I mean, I can tell you, we don't get any, many calls about it. And I, and I like, like the way it works in many ways, but by the same token, there should be a consistent standard that both any vendor who does this.
Yeah, it's like a septic hall. They have, they have to comply to certain safety guidelines. It makes sense.
Yeah, that's what we're looking to do.
Can I add my two cents because it's a couple of times, things have come to this table and I've heard even tonight, you said, "I wasn't aware of that letter or that happened or that," it was on the agenda and you weren't sure of the backup, of the background. A.J. Dooley worked his tail off over the last couple of years and built his business in Foxborough on top of a debacle that I think the town had a good share of responsibility in creating. So, he's built his business, he's invested, he's employees, all different types of people in town. If we're doing anything that's going to change the regulations in contract, that's going to put him in a disadvantage, I think you need to reach out to him sooner than later. I agree with John.
Actually, I called him today.
Yeah. Overregul, I'm not a big fan of regulating.
I think he's doing a great job, as he is.
Yeah, I saw what happened last year with the Board of Health with going over what was more strict than what the state has. The Board of Health now, not picking on the Board of Health, but they're looking to change septic, cesspool regulations past the state regulations. If we don't need to regulate, fair market will find its niche. Russell will find its niche, A.J. Dooley will find his niche. Sometimes we need to stay out of it. And this is coming off of an administration before you were here that I think Town Hall had a big hand in screwing up a lot of the stuff with the trash. And that's my opinion. So, I just hate for this to come back at our table and say, "Nobody told you what was going on the year before" because it's a heated, it was a heated topic.
Oh, I understand. And I'm, again, I think the, I want to be clear about my position on this is that I think what I'd like to see is that there's a, there's a consistent standard by which we provide the free enterprise service in this community so that people.
All right. There's no disagreement on that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
Yeah, cleanliness of trucks and pickup times and all that.
We don't want people just running roughshod around town. I mean, that's, that's another, and I'm not suggesting that the contracts are doing that, but, but we ought to have a standard in place that we can point to in case we do run into that situation.
And to speak to Jim's concern, I know some towns limit their trash pickup to just one entity. And I don't think that's, that I don't think is what the town is looking for. I think we're looking for competitive.
Competitive pricing because it keeps, keeps the price down for the residents as well, which I, I don't disagree with either. I think that, but I, but the other side of it, you don't want, like right now, there are, there are, there are nineteen different companies that are licensed to do collect trash in this community. That's a lot. So, I think we probably should take a look at that.
Well, one, that's commercial. I mean, but curbside residential, there's really only two. Unless you privately.
Yeah, there are a few more, there are a few more than that. But the, but the two primary ones are our existing contractor, which is Russell and as well as Dooley. Those are the two primaries. So, we want to, just want to be careful that.
But from where we came with that issue miraculously it's worked out.
Listen, I, I'm not looking to create a problem where there's not one, you know, that's, that's, I want to be clear about that. But by the same token, I also think that we should, we should provide a standard to which we can protect the town.
Are we hearing complaints that we're not protected, that the trucks are a mess or there's oil being spilled or trash? I haven't heard any complaints.
I've heard, I've heard some concerns about that, but, you know, it's not a lot though, Jim. And I'm being entirely honest about that. But the, there is, the concern though is that, you know, when you don't have regulation in place, it can get out of hand. And I just don't want to be in a position where we're trying to play catch up on a situation like that.
Yeah, but that doesn't necessarily mean they have to be under contract.
Oh, absolutely. I'm not necessarily looking to do that.
They can be allowed to operate as long as they comply with the regulations.
Yeah, in other words, they get a license from the town to operate, period.
So, just out of curiosity, where is this coming from? Is there a, is this from the Board of Health or is this from?
No, the Russell contract is expiring.
So, it's a schedule.
It's expiring and there's no, there's nothing in place for me to point to. It's okay, what are we using here as a standard?
Gotcha.
You know, so I gotta look at that.
Okay. So, what's the timeframe that you're looking at for a commitment from a volunteer?
Well, I'm looking, the commitment from a volunteer is probably just a couple of months. I mean, because I'd like to have something in place by, by March first.
I don't know, I don't know.
So, is that a renewal at January first? Is it Tuesday?
It's, no, it's, it's, I believe it's July one renewal.
Okay.
So, we've got some time. But I'd like to have this issue resolved by, fully by, by March first if we could.
Okay. So, if anyone on the board would volunteer, send a note off to Bill. Okay?
You don't, yeah, you don't have to tell them right now because I want you to check your schedules first.
The bill is a soft on trash.
This afternoon, Mary Beth and I, we're actually welcoming the new business to the community today. Toshiba Office Solutions opened their new offices on Hampshire Street here in Foxborough. And congratulations to them. It's good to have them here. They actually relocated their offices from Lincoln Run Island to Foxborough. And, and some of our local Foxborough residents are working at that facility. So, it was, you know, just a congratulations to all that made it. I think it's a, it's a great facility.
Beautiful.
Really, really well done. And, and it's interesting that they pointed out to us that since they've moved to this location here in Foxborough, their business has gone up one hundred and fifty-eight percent in just the short time they've been here. So, that's, that's really, that's really, they said the Massachusetts business environment is actually quite good right now. So, I think it's really good to see that. So, again, David pointed out the hearing on the Town Hall Project Thursday, which will be held right in this room on, at seven o'clock on Thursday night. And anyone who has any questions about the project, we encourage you to, to come and ask, ask away. Finally, I have not heard anything yet from, from the state MBTA relative to a hearing on the train issue. I know that, you know, there's been some speculation about, you know, and I just want everybody to hear directly from me. I have not heard anything back. My understanding is that they're still trying to, to brief both the state representative and the state senator on this matter. They had a date apparently last week, but then they couldn't, then they had it canceled because there was no, there was, there was a problem with calendar, a calendar problem. So, they had to, they had to remove that, move that date to a different date. So, I don't know when the new date has been set, but they will, their process is that they normally will advise them for us and then advise us. So, just to, I can give you the latest information on that front. Okay. And Mary Beth, I don't have anything you want to do?
Well, probably, just to let you know, we did reinvigorate the wage and personnel board this week.
Yeah.
We had a wonderful meeting on Wednesday.
Yeah.
And we had three of the members attend, Bill and myself, and Randy Scholes came. And Randy was able to, the board, that board hadn't met in over a year, probably closer to a year and a half. And so, Randy came and gave like a history of how our compensation plans and our bylaws have changed over the years, some of the studies that have been done. We actually were all of very like mind that, you know, we think that there needs to be some compensation review of our, not only our bylaw, but of our compensation plans. And we were all in agreement that it has to be something, you know, we want to pay people to the market rate, but we also want to have internal equity and apply it in a fair way. And then obviously, a sustainable pay plan that, you know, Randy can budget for. So, we had a really productive meeting. The group is going to meet on a regular basis. We'd like to be able to review and revise the bylaw in preparation for annual town meeting. So, we thought about, we're going to probably try to convene on Mondays or Wednesdays, like a five-thirty time slot worked for everybody. So, we haven't set up the next meeting, but we feel very positive that the group wanted to be back together. And, you know, after talking to the employees, we've engaged in contract negotiations with groups this week. Today, we met with steelworkers and dispatchers this week as well as fire. And we just feel a need that there's been a lot of transition and misunderstandings with compensation. And I think it's, it's something that will go a long way if we define this.
Gary, you still on this? Yeah, who's on besides Gary?
Ozzy, William Penns, and Nancy Bajer.
Oh, super, okay. Nancy's been on for quite a while.
Yeah, she has.
We do have one vacancy on the board, so if you know of anybody.
And it's sort of a shout out to the, the community if anybody has an HR background, you know, human resource.
Unemployment law.
Unemployment law, any one of those.
Yep.
And Nancy has, Nancy has an HR background.
Mm-hmm, she does, yep.
So, she's served the community very well.
Certainly would be helpful to have that if we could find somebody.
Yeah, she was, she was very helpful. So, we feel very positive about that.
So, just on the makeup of a board, from your experience, you've got town employees on the board and you've got citizens, taxpayers on the board. Where do you see the mix?
There's not a town employee on this board.
We were just the staff in attendance at the meeting.
We were just, yeah, we were just the staff.
Gary, you're not on the board? Are we talking about two different boards?
First, no wage board.
I saw a wage board.
Oh, I thought you were, I thought you were pointing to him that he was at the meeting or he was.
Oh, no, he's, he's actually, he's a member of the board.
He's a chair.
Yeah, Jim, without me.
But he's not an employee?
Gary?
Are we?
No.
No, Gary's not.
Yeah.
It's appointed board members from the community, they're volunteers.
Correct. So, they're appointed board members that are volunteers. You're saying there's no employees in the town?
Right.
All non-employee people, okay, that's.
Right, yeah.
And the idea is, you know, they're a sounding board for employees who, or department heads who want to come. And Bill and I also would love to use them as a resource for policies and.
And procedures.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
At one point, they were, they were piled with a much heavier role because of the fact that the, until the charter was changed and some of their authority was, was taken from them and put in the, under the guise of the, of the Town Manager Act. But I still view them as being an important role in the organization because we can bounce ideas off of them that they think will, they will give us reaction to, which will help us in terms of guiding some of the policy development that needs to be done. I don't like to be creating policy without having some feedback as to what kind of direction we're taking.
Agreed.
So, is that it?
Let's see. I think so. Just to update the board, I've been, you know, continuing my like roadshow of trying to meet people and I've now engaged in meetings with some of our vendors. We met with Maya on our senior retiree plans. And for those folks who are on retiree plans with the town, we're looking at some lower cost options coming up, maybe a, a new plan that might be an added option to it and some other creative ways to get our own prescription costs as well. So, we're looking to advocate for retirees in that way. And also, I met with our unemployment and workers' comp vendors who have to say the town has two very good policies in place. But one of the things that seems to have been lacking is the communication and the rollout of how to actually work the process and the procedures for handling those situations. So, I'm working closely with department heads and people who are involved in the process on that. And then finally, on Friday, just another shout out to the MMA. We have our annual labor relations conference on Friday for the MMA. And I've been asked to moderate a panel on creative ways to, in collective bargaining, or creative ways to engage in collective bargaining. So, that's next Friday. Bill may or may not be able to attend, I don't know.
I'm going to try and go if I can, I'm not sure. A few things going on.
It's a busy week.
Busy week.
Yeah.
But that's it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I just want to say a special thank you to Bill and David for all the work you've done on the Town Hall Project, getting ready for this meeting. Great accomplishment. Really appreciate it.
Well, thank you. It's been a great process. I've really enjoyed it. You know, and I, I will say this to the end, that even though we had differences with certain folks on the committee, those, those differences were important because they actually led us in directions which we didn't think about sometimes. And I think it sort of helped validate some of the directions that we took. So, it was important to have that, that diverse opinions on that committee. So, it was really helpful.
Thank you. Any other items? I think we're all set. Have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.